This point that I need if we can do.
Yes.
And Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Osman.
Yes, Mr. Ely.
Yes.
Mr. Mannan.
Yes.
Mr. McBadens.
Yes.
And Ms. Webster is here.
Thank you. At this time, if everyone stand and say the project's in the agents. Thank you. At this point, before we improve the agenda, I have a question for Lenee, which is on there. She's. Lenee, we have a, we have an item to consider. Determination reconsideration. And I'm wondering if we address that now and add that to the new business? Or that's something that maybe comes into play under correspondence? We'll discuss then because it's, we can't through via correspondence. Just wondering what the appropriate way is to handle it.
Yeah, we can handle it under correspondence. It's a letter that was received from Barnum regarding the Blue Star Bend project. And a request to reconsider that application item. So if you could add that under correspondence, I guess like a A, A1.
Okay. All right, so. But at this point, I'd like to add under Communications, aid correspondence, add another item. Maybe number one, the discussion of Blue Star Bend LLC use determination reconsideration. Second. No, I think it is.
So therefore with that addition, are you asking for approval of the agenda with that addition?
Well, I guess I'm waiting to see if there are any more additions at this point. If there are none, then yes, I am. So is everybody, we're just going to hold it for everybody's okay with adding to the agenda? Say aye. Aye. We'll add it under correspondence. Otherwise, if everyone's in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye. Aye. Okay, thank you. We will quickly then move on to the, under approval of minutes from April 15th of 2025. We will start with page one. Changes, the additions. You know how it works. Page two. There are none, page three. Page four.
Under Communication, item sleep. The first line, it should be Webster states that she and planning zone. George she.
She.
Thank you. Page five. And page six. Hey, hearing no more changes. I would say request approval of the agenda as amended for April 15.
I moved to the Minnesota April 15th with the corrections.
Yes.
That's all.
Tell those in favor. Aye, okay, thank you. At this point, we will open up public comments. At this time, anyone in the public is, or in the audience here or via Zoom is welcome to come up. Well, in the audience is welcome to come up to the microphone. You'll have three minutes to speak for, you come up, please state your name, your address. And you know, you have three, like I said, three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of the group, we'll extend that to five minutes. Once we're done with in person, we'll move on to Zoom and they'll have the same, you know, same rules. At this time, I will open it up to the first row. If anyone would like to come up and. Second row. Third row. And fourth row.
Are we speaking to the public hearings at this point?
No.
Okay.
No. Yeah, I should say that if you are here for a specific item under new business as a public hearing attached to it, then you'll, you'll have time at that point to speak to that item directly.
So since you've added the course, can I just?
I would say come up now, there will not be a public hearing portion of yours.
My name is Andy Murch. I live in 2348 George Drive. And I would like to request planning commission reconsideration use determination decision with respect to its denial at the April 15 meeting of Blue Star Bend's proposed office building as a permitted use. This was debated and voted on at that. There was at least an appearance of a conflict of interest and one avoiding. Members appear to own a piece of property located in the sanctuary, which is adjacent to Blue Star Bend. Captified under the planning commission by all the rules of procedure, all nine conflicts of interest and remedies and none of these were followed at the time. The proposed office building is a permitted use and the nihilist boundary to plain reading of the township's zoning ordinance. More detailed discussion of this can be found in May 15 letter from our attorney, which was Nancy Riller. The community manager and C C political attorney. And I stated I would like to request reconsideration, many promotions. Deciding to deny Blue Star Bend's proposed office building as a permitted use. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? See none, at this point, I will close the public comment period and we will move on to new business. The first item in the business is a public hearing to consider a rezoning from C2 to R1 on a portion of parcel 20003-028-00. The parcel is generally located near 65th and 135th as part of the Singapore retreat U V request. Now, the applicant is Brian Silva and his agent is itself. So at this time, I, we will open up, if you'd like to be all very patient.
Thank you. I'll set this up kind of pointing to the audience, I think we all. Trying to get everyone. My name is Todd Steyman with Excel Engineering representing Cucci Builders and Developers here this evening. On this item, this item is related to Singapore retreat. Developments, I highlighted the area of rezoning there on the plan, the property itself is a little over nine acres. With the, the north westerly corner of that property being zone C2, the rest of the property is zone R1. So that C2 is basically a corridor area along Blue Star Highway. So this property is, is basically the dual zone piece. We are requesting that the entire property zone R1. So that highlighted area that's currently zone C2 is requested to also be resoned to R1. That's, I don't really have anything more to add other than that, we had a lot of discussion. I think at the last meeting about, you know, the whys. Why we would do that. But if, if it's done this way, then the comparison plan that is required can be considered under fully only the R1 zone. And also the entire property is requested under the claim to be residential. So, which you know several reasons why it does make sense to proceed or resone. Randy, Randy Cucci is also here to be out.
Okay, thank you. Leneos, do you have anything to add to the request or explanation?
Um, no, I did prepare the memorandum for your review, but as Mr. Steyman mentioned, the request is consistent with our township future land use plan, which indicates this 1.5 acre area as residential. It's also consistent with the adjacent land uses to the west, south and east, which are all residential. The site could be served by utilities. It would have to be, those would have to be extended. And there are no natural constraints. You know, there are woodlands on the property. But in terms of other, other natural resources, there are no other constraints to residential. So we're looking for a recommendation from the planning commission to rezone this parcel or this portion of the parcel from C2 to R1. And then it would be considered by the township board. But this is a public hearing, so you are. As well, thank you.
Yes, when they mentioned, because it is a public hearing, at this point, I'll open it up to the public hearing. And at this time, same rules applied as I said before, just for the, the original public comment period. Three minutes or five minutes in a group, can you come up to the front, please state your name and your address? And we will start with row one.
Hello, I'm Maria Brooks Miller. I live at 6458 135th Avenue, directly behind the project. I still, I'm sorry, I still don't see much of an improvement for this project, I haven't. I know we're proposing this converting into residential. I might be behind on everything, they're still trying to change to make this better for all of us in the residents that have been living here forever. And I am exhausted, I have a lot to talk about. But I don't, I don't agree, I really don't. A lot of us have been here for a long time and the reason why we're here is because of the way it was. And I'm all for growth, I am, but it has to eat up every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Row two.
Good evening, my name is Jan Von Enz, I live at 3535 65th Street. I've been a resident for 44 years, I love the property. I spoke at the last meeting for quite some time and I gave all my reasons why I did not want this. And I think that's all in the book, so I'm not going to reiterate that again. But just thinking about it and going around the whole country block, there's only 20 residents that live in the whole area. And in those nine acres, they want to put this huge development, which is going to be like 122 people, which is outlandish to me that we should have to deal with something like this. And I would hope that something smaller, I'm all in favor of more housing, but I'd like to see something nicer. Maybe nine homes in there, nine each, one acre home. And something nice, I just don't like the massive, massiveness of this.
Jennifer Forsythe, I live at 48464 Street, Lake Town, so I'm really not involved. Although I've grown up here for about 40 years. And I agree there is a need for more affordable housing. But it seems like there are a lot of developments growing up around the area and subdivisions. And I just feel like our wildlife is getting infringed on, so I took a special place and we need to keep more wildlife places. I would propose having a few houses in there, but not a big one. Place to build.
Thank you. Anyone else in row two? Row three?
My name is Mary Patterson, I live at 6438 Sandbrook Lane, which is right there along that stretch. I'm extremely concerned about adding a lot more density back there because of traffic problems. Already along 64th, there are no sidewalks. When a resident tries to walk, when I try to walk my dog along 64th, it's always a challenge when I see children on there or bicyclists on there. It's a challenge. And if you add 100 more people with their associated cars that are trying to get in and out, either over by the hospital or coming down 64th Street, it's going to be a nightmare. We came to, we live in Sagittar because we want to be able to go out and walk our dog down the street, not have to play dodgem cars. Already with Blue Star Parkway in middle of tourist season, we know what that's like already to try to get out onto Blue Star with just the current number of residents, that is a problem. If I want to take my bicycle across Blue Star to go up the bike path, I'm taking my light in my hands. If you add that many more cars that are transiting streets with no sidewalks, no traffic lights, it's just creating a very hazardous environment and a very unpleasant environment for us residents. A few more homes in there with appropriate planning for traffic patterns. Great, I understand why people want to develop that property. But to slam in potentially 30 more units in that small area that has no the access and egress from that area on those streets is already a problem. And I've seen nothing that is addressing the basic issue of safety for the current residents. Thank you.
Thank you. For moving on to next, this. Yeah, I appreciate her, I understand the passion in the residents here, but just remember though that we're talking about the rezoning. Going from C1 to, to residential zone. So this really isn't regarding the number of units and the layout of the project and what have you, so. By the way, under the remaining of row three. I think we're right. Row four. Move on to zooming. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have a question, I'm sorry, I don't understand. Is that rezoning necessary in order to approve the massive number of houses you want to stuff in there? If that stayed commercial and you didn't have those two pieces as part of that property, are the plans we've seen no longer viable? Is that why the push, is that why there's the push to take it residential?
Sorry, it's not a question and answer period, this is public notice, we'll, we'll get to that, though, we can talk about that as we do the planning commission discussion. Is there anyone else? Okay, now moving on to Zoom.
No one on Zoom.
No one on Zoom, okay. At this point, I will close the public commentary and we will open it up to planning commission discussion. So happy to listen, any comments?
Yeah, they should have, that's the question, what was the density for and what was the density of the phone? Combined. Um, is Lenee on?
Yep.
Lenee is out. I'm sorry, what was the question?
Is there a difference?
I remember it was, I think there was, it was a minimal number of units. Only scheme with the combined zone versus what it is now, it's two and R1. Lenee, do you have that?
I don't have that information. The changing from C1 to R1 is necessary, well, is that, is what they're looking for to do a parallel plan that would include the unit types that they are proposing. I don't know that the change in zoning modifies the density, but I'm sure the engineer would be able to answer that as well. In, in town, in, in R1, you know, town homes are permitted by right. Three homes per building. Or I'm sorry, they're permitted as a special land use. Two family homes are permitted by right. Single family homes are permitted by right. The PUD, which is not on the agenda today. And they're seeking the PUD for a couple of reasons. One, there would be a density bonus. I think it represents two additional units, two or three additional units. They also can vary the dimensions of the lot, so they can make their setbacks smaller. They can make their, you know, be closer to the, the road that they're proposing or have, have less side yards. But I believe if they were to do a by right development that the ordinance would allow without planning, you know, planning commission or township board intervention, they would still be able to do close to the same amount of units that they're proposing, maybe two fewer. units that they're proposing, maybe two fewer.
And where a stoplight has to be considered at Blue Star? Is that solely determined by the county commissioner?
Yes, it is.
And we know they've looked at that, and we've talked about it, but I don't know if they have looked at it.
Maybe Lene would more, know a little more than I would, but I know there has been discussions about a roundabout.
Yeah, I mean, uh, in the Blue Star Safety Plan, there's some concepts for the intersections, uh, the main intersections along Blue Star. Um, I think predominantly the use of the, um, roundabout is something that the county favors.
However, that Blue Star plan was, was developed prior to knowing that this was, this lot was, this parcel was going to be developed. So even though that was thought of at that time, that doesn't mean it won't change because this parcel is now being developed. Is that correct, Lene? Is that, we would have to revisit that to see whether that roundabout or a stoplight or something else could be done in that intersection, and we all realize that this intersection has been problematic from the time that it was built.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that would, that would be something for the county to look into.
So then therefore there could be revisited. And what the appropriate action would be from Allegheny County. It would be hard to speculate at this point. And, uh, however, it has been noted in even the last minute when we discussed this, is that we're all aware that that is a four intersection, and that something needs to be done.
It's a six-way intersection?
Yeah, yes.
So I don't know if that can be served by, very easily served by the way, I mean, it's more of a natural roundabout solution, isn't it? Lene?
Well, there, and I don't, because I'm very far, but Lene, I know I was in a meeting a while back, and there were actually several plans, uh, that were, and they were all conceptual. I mean, nothing is high creep or, you know, I, I don't believe they've gotten very far in all of these discussions, but there were, there were other options. That ending a road and, oh, uh, so there, there were different ideas that were being thrown out there, but this was just more like throwing darts at a wall, you know?
Well, and again, there is a, a Blue Star Safety Plan that has been, been approved by the board, so there, it is been completed. And once again, it's, it's actually being, it was developed prior to this parcel even under consideration. So that doesn't mean that we wouldn't revisit that. So is it, that's already out. It's, I think, and I believe it's on our website, on the township website, and what that conceptual plan was. Again, it was conceptual. It is, but it was then approved.
The other issue that we discussed was the water and sewer capacity for the township. And I did speak to Daniel that there, there are negotiations in a contract being negotiated with the city of Sagittar. The negotiations with Douglas are moving ahead, um, with these states. Um, so when we do look at this property and the density, we have to take into account how many people are going to be in there. And we're going to have to have something from our engineering firm that the township has the legal capacity for water to supply water and sewer to these sites, um, because we still, we still don't have unlimited, um, access to Cal Lake. We are under contractual restraint, so anything we do will still have to be subject to, um, the engineers signing off that we have a capacity, because that was one of the limiting factors to, um, the campsite that, um, they finally had to cut back their number. Now, if we do the residential capacity, what's to stop them from coming back and say, we want to go back to our original plan and incorporate the additional sites on that site? So then you're going to have even more capacity coming into that area. Which would be one universal concern that everybody was taking the podium, is the rest.
So I just pulled, pulled up the, um, that PUD plan, so by right, again, without planning commission, um, they could do fourteen two-unit buildings. So that would be twenty-eight residences. And then their PUD plan.
Is that the way of zone now?
Yeah, um, that would be, that would be either zoning.
Either zoning.
Either zoning. And with the PUD, again, that's not on the agenda today, but with the PUD, it would be thirty dwellings. But the difference there is that there are, um, instead of fourteen two-units, there are ten two-units, and then they have two buildings that are townhouse buildings. So one of those buildings is a six-plex, and the other building is a four-plex. Like rowhouse style.
I can tell you that, that if I look at this, this, the rezoning, so I'm, I'm just talking about the rezoning. There's, uh, that certainly is advantageous for us not to have a dual or a split zoning. So by, by removing that little bit of, what, what you would make or, or so, is that, that, that whole parcel now becomes residential. And realizing that without the split zoning, it really is, is a better, better choice that it's all residential rather than.
Right, because, yeah, on the C-two, you could have a restaurant or a bathroom. And split zoning is always a challenge when you're trying to process.
Especially not in a dying.
Yeah, yeah.
But we can, we could go ahead with the zoning issue, but still leave our options, uh, open to us when they come back to us for the actual safety.
Different things, we're talking about two different things.
Just make sure that you guys understand, but this is not the final word. There, we don't have much to say about density on the next go-around, because they have no real right to do what Lene has outlined.
If they have the water and sewer.
Water and sewer.
We don't know that.
What is the zoning immediately west of the property?
Residential, really.
Excellent.
It's residential. That's all residential in there, just for that little bit.
For just a little piece here.
To my understanding, yes.
I believe that's correct. I don't have my book, but.
Yeah, I guess, when, and at the property between this line that we're requesting, here, here's the C-two, R-one line, so everything between Blue Star in this line is C-two, even though it's, you, its use is currently residential. Right, but the way you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe primarily that property in the last is C-two. Now this down here turns, down here itself turns back to R-one, but, yeah, okay.
Which is basically across the street, so it's across, um, one thirty-five, then that's all with C-two. Because you're, the hospital's there.
Oh, into the, to the north, yes.
For the west, of course. And signals.
C-two. So it'd be at the east of this, yeah, along that Blue Star corner, it's also aligned now.
That's a, that's about, I think, five hundred feet on either side of Blue Star is commercial.
You got a good C-two. C-two.
Whatever, those are all residential. They have their homes along with their sixty-fifth Street.
Makes sense to have it all combined into R-one. We could be aggressive for the assets. Well, the fact that. Are you not to comment?
Well, by right, it's, sorry. Well, by right, even if we didn't change this, they still have the ability to have fourteen two-unit buildings, whether it's C-two or it's R-one, that plenty of those. So it, it really doesn't change the potential for density. By right, thanks. Hope there's any other, there's not any other discussion. At this point, I will, uh, entertain a motion.
I can make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
You're gonna, you're making a motion to recommend in the township.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Zoning from C-two to R-one, and a portion of the parcel, twenty oh oh three, oh two eight, oh oh parcel, uh, generally located near sixty-five hundred thirty-five. Is that correct?
I would support the head.
I'll remember that.
You don't have to, she'll, she'll.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a second. Uh, any other discussion? No?
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Osman?
Yes.
Mr. Eileen?
Yes.
Mr. Sanus?
Yes.
Mr. McFadden?
Yes.
And then Ms. Webster is, yes.
Okay. Now we will move, uh, we will move on to, uh, new business IMB, uh, which also has a public hearing. It considers vital land use for mineral, mineral extraction, the waste and recycling, located off one hundred and thirty-fourth and Sixth and Third, on parcel oh three two zero dash two six zero dash zero zero eight dash zero zero, located in the I-one industrial district, uh, the applicant, Brian Timmer, uh, with Wooden Iron LLC. At this point, I mean. I'll give it one tripod, everyone.
Good evening. I'm John Tempest with Drazing and Associates. I'm civil engineer here representing Wooden Iron LLC. Brian Timmer here is the owner, and he's here with me as well. I'll just give you a brief overview of the project, and then we're happy to answer any questions you have. And, uh, go from there. So, um, we are proposing, this is a ten-and-a-half acre site on one hundred and thirty-four, just west of sixty-third, so between sixty-third and the highway, just set it down that way a little ways. Um, it's a ten-and-a-half acre site that is currently vacant, and we are proposing uh, two, two primary functions on this site. One is mineral extraction with construction of a pond, and that is, uh, you can see the, kind of the outline of the pond there at the south end of the site. Um, we've got a proposed driveway improvement on one hundred and thirty-fourth that will be, um, built in compliance with Allen County Building standards. And then a driveway that leads into the site for extraction of, uh, sand. So the material on site that we're going to be removing is sand, and that's going to be used for construction projects in the area. We have looked at the material on site. We know it's suitable for that, it's good material. Um, the owner has done, uh, his due diligence with environmental. We know the landfill is adjacent to the property and a phase one and a phase two environmental assessment happened, and the material is clean. Uh, there's no contamination surrounding the property. Um, so that is the first function, and then the second function is kind of hard to see, but right in this area here, just north of the pond, um, and mineral extraction area is a location for a seasonal material processing plant. And what that is, is, um, they will be bringing materials in from construction sites, namely crushed concrete, uh, milled asphalt. Um, they'll be bringing those materials into the site and stockpiling them on the site throughout the year. And then once per year in the fall, they will bring in a mobile processing plant that will take that material and crush it and make it suitable for use in new projects. So it's essentially recycling that, um, broken-up concrete into a crushed concrete material that can be used as an energy base for roadways. Um, and then the millings, the asphalt will be trucked up into the millings that can be reused for, uh, driveways or, you know, any number of uses of construction projects in the area. So the mineral extraction is proposed to take place over the course of approximately two years. Uh, we anticipate that will be completed by, uh, twenty twenty-seven. And then the material processing, the recycling, that will be ongoing. So again, material will be brought in throughout the course of the year. Um, and then just during one period of time, typically in the fall, the processing plant will be brought on site. All material will be processed, stockpiled there. The plant will be removed from the site. It's not going to be, this equipment is not going to be on-site year-round. And then the material, once it's been processed, can be then, um, taken out and brought to construction projects. So, um, SiteWork Solutions is another business of Brian's, and that is the business that is going to be utilizing this. So it's, it's not a facility that's going to be selling this material to others' users. We're not going to be selling to other, um, excavating businesses or construction businesses. It's going to be uh, for SiteWork Solutions use. So, um, that operation is going to happen, you know, basically during the week days, Monday through Friday, and eight to nine. Um, you know, trucks are going to be coming in to drop off the used material, and then, uh, once that plant processes, they'll be, you know, bringing in trucks to haul away that material and use it on the parkings going forward. Um, a couple of other quick notes. Um, the, uh, stockpiles, there was a question about the height of the stockpile. We are not going to build those stockpiles any higher than twenty-five feet. And we know that, uh, we're going to have to get conditions for, you know, we're still working through the approvals with the real commission and the drain commissioner. Um, a little bit on the stormwater side, I guess, this, this entire site, um, is, we're going to contain our stormwater within the property. Nothing's going to leave the site. The satellites are going to be directed, there will be a ditch along the west side of the driveway that is going to convey all the stormwater south and into our pond. It's going to remain on-site and infiltrate into the ground, so we will have no off-site discharge. Um, and the volume actually is going to be well, the excess of what the drain commission requirements would have paid for one hundred. So we don't anticipate any issues there, but we are still working through that approval, so. Um, I think there was reference to the wellhead protection area. We are within that area as well. And there are no moves proposed on this property that are prohibited under that wellhead protection overlay district. Uh, there's some information on the plan identifying, um, you know, various criteria of the wellhead protection is by, it improved on the property, so we are compliant with it. I think those are the highlights I wanted to hit. If you have any questions, Brian and I, we agree with that, so.
So, single recycling, easily as good all. My practice, that is pretty loud, you know, pretty dusty. It's sort of a ballpark for the, uh.
And the fall that's going to happen. Let Brian.
Yeah, the context.
It's very complex.
No, uh, so the context, it kind of depends on these, so you have. One of these facilities kind of around the corner that this grandfather did, uh, they crush you round. What, what is that? Help for one hundred and thirty fourth, there's no, it's right there. Um, there's no facility there, it, it's not loud, um. They do use a water to spray them, so that they have very circular and quality. For dust control or water discharge, um. It looks like semi truck, comes in on two semi trucks, has a hopper on the end, two conveyors on it. Um, specifically like, uh, the asphalt, we take asphalt out of your community. Um, and it'll be crushed up and actually. Um, Sargatac Township is installing their first asphalt milling road, we're, we're currently doing it. Um, on River Bend dugout, um, that project alone is taking twenty five hundred tons of this material. That has to be sourced from as far away as Battle Creek, because it's not here. Um, there, there's just not a supply in this market, so it's part of the reason we kind of chose this. Um, and it, we use a ton of it in this community. Um, and it's good recycling with not, you know, kind of this land, so. Um, I had two comments added that just on your question, so Paul, there's, I guess.
Said it's not noisy, you know, the dust, because it's active, loud, rough. Pond and it's that large. Keep the dust down, so.
I, I believe that, I don't have the actual dustful rating for you, but it, it will be less than the tree recyclers that are. Some levels down one hundred and thirty fourth with the tree recyclers, they bring in their tub grinders and their bill and it throws dust and. Spray it, it's pretty loud, chunky noise, uh, we do have, there's only one, um, residence. Uh, across the street, uh, from us that is permanent, we have. They're trying to be a great neighbor here, north of you, uh, the north of us, I believe, uh, do you have a map real quick?
Okay, sure. Sure.
Kind of goes to why we purchased the property, there's good location for, for us, not so much for. Smoke uses. Um. So one of the reasons we chose this was the lack of recycled materials in, in the community. Um. It has a high concentration of other recycling plants right around one hundred and thirty fourth, I believe there's six. If you count up and down one hundred and thirty fourth and around the corner, between all the bark and mulch recycling plants, um, that are in that area. Um, I believe there's six of them right there, including the, um, coming dump. Um. There is a severe lack of development opportunities for this parcel, given the landfill on two sides of it owned by the city of Sargatac. Um, that was the original, where's leftovers that, a landfill, um, that was acquired by Land Management and we. Given the many things that were capped, it is currently unlined. Um, that was a huge concern for us, the unlined landfill, so we did a phase one, a phase two, where we did soil borings, um, down to the water levels. Um. And the water movement is not moving north, it is actually moving northeast. Um, out of the landfill, um, that is a huge, was a huge concern of ours, we tested all the pull on eagle reports. Um, in the landfill, um, and we tested for all their, their materials that they found in the landfill and walking back. What did you say? That, that along with, so, we, we saw it as a kind of a lack of those opportunities because. And we are, we are adjacent to the landfill, actually after we had the survey, parcel of the landfill is part of our property. Um, their clay gap extends, um, into the parcel we back on. Um. And in, in talking with the township here a little bit, I know some of the sand extraction plants that you guys have in the past, something. Have a problem. Give two of them, one who's from top grade out on, uh, Old Eagle Road and the other one. Um, over on the other side of the highway, the kids still couldn't get moving that are turning into housing development, but we don't, that, that's not what this is. Um. We are a family and executive company and we're looking for a spot to kind of grow and create. So we don't have plans to turn this into a development, um, it'll be a, a material yard. It'll be, um, maybe serve a lot of residents in, in the community and definitely commercial and industrial construction activity too. Um, specifically in the country. Thanks, that's all, there's a long answer here for you.
And Monae's. This point, that, and here. Any more information, Brian?
Sure. Um, thank you, thank you all for the overview and, and I think, um, you helped answer, uh, some of the questions. Um. Before I start, I just want to let you know there was, um, a public comment received in writing from the city of Sargatac. Um, expressing some concern about the pond, the pond creation and, um. Because it's next to the landfill, um, their concern would be the creation of a pond that's an expression of the water table. That could impact groundwater flow. Um, Mr. Cummings from the city said they don't know the current status of the groundwater quality. And typically creating a pond or lake acts similar to a shallow pumping well due to evaporate, evaporation. So if the landfill is leaching, that could draw contaminants to the pond. Some groundwater sampling would probably be wise to see what contaminants, if any, might be drawn to the pond from the landfill site. Um. So I just want to let that be known and be part of the record. And that's in line with some of the comments that the township engineer included in their memo. Um. We did, we did, um. Happen upon this, uh, operation, um, about eight months ago. While doing a site visit to Tales and Trails, um, so this request comes to you after enforcement action, so. Um, I just wanted to let everyone know that. And, um, there were some remaining questions that we had before any type of, I think, recommendation or resolution could be crafted. Um, it is important to have a public hearing and to, to bring this item to the planning commission. But we still have some remaining questions. Um, it wasn't clear, uh, in the application, they mentioned three thousand cubic yards of material annually. What wasn't clear to me was whether, um, that's fifteen hundred cubic yards brought in and out for a total of three thousand? Or would it be three thousand brought in? Um. And another three thousand leaving, so it's actually moving six thousand cubic yards. And, or whether the three thousand cubic yards that's brought in, um. Includes. The yardage of the sand that would be excavated and hauled out, so, um. Just not sure about what the total is there, you know, if it's three thousand cubic yards, that's about two hundred and seventy. Or more trucks per year. Um, so that was a question that we had, we also wanted to hear more about the dust mitigation. Um, I'm sure that the materials that are brought in for recycling are probably heavy enough, they may not be. Generating a lot of dust, but the sand, we know from past experience, um, that that can be an issue. Um. We weren't, the applicant did say that they're reducing some of the setbacks because of. Approval from the owners, but we wanted to see the, that in writing, not just, uh, assume approval or word of mouth, we'd like to have a notarized statement. Of that, um, I mentioned earlier the contamination concerns specifically with the pond. Um, you know, if we think of these almost as two separate things, one is the pond and the sand, um, excavation. And the second would be the material recycling, so, um, I don't know that they both. Are dependent on one another, like, could one happen without the other, um, potentially? Um, but, but I just want you to be aware of that, that it, you, you could be thinking this, of this as two separate things. Um. Fencing is required, that's not shown on the plans, also visible posts every fifty feet are required. Um, they're not shown on the plans. Um, the applicant did talk about the timeframe, they said that the activity is ending in twenty twenty seven. But it's not clear what activity, is that the sand mining, is that the recycling, is that? Combination, uh, we really need specifics and maybe if there's more detail on the specifics of each of those activities, the pond. And the sand mining versus the material recycling. Um, and what, what is the timeframe of, of each of those? Um. Construction season is kind of broad, um. We weren't sure if that, I, I think it was mentioned in the fall. Um, but is it, is it one week per material, one week total? Will the hours of the crushing be the same as the hours of the sand mining? Um, and the recycling, uh. Use and then, um, just more information on truck traffic, I guess that kind of relates back to the cubic yard comment that we had. Um, I do want you to know that the, they are planning to gate the site and the fire district is fine with that, they reviewed that and approved it. They had no other comments because there's no structures, um, proposed on the property. Um, I don't know if the applicant has his driveway permit yet, they cut a driveway in without a permit. Um, so I don't know if they have a permit retroactively. Um, and then in terms of the memo from the engineer, I think there's quite a few comments in here about the lake. You know, the, the, where the water will be, how big that lake is, um, or the pond, I guess. Um, questions about the water level, uh, the normal water level and where that information was derived from. Um. Just other, I don't think he had a copy of the soil boring reports or the phase one, phase two. Um, so I think that would be helpful. Um, we also don't have a restoration plan per se, which. Led me to those questions about the timeline, you know, is this an activity that's going to happen? Is it ongoing, is it just the pond and the sand that's ending in two thousand twenty seven? Um. Or not, and then i- if this operation does have an end date, then what is the restoration plan? So quite a few questions still, um, but I'd be happy to answer any that you might have. In addition to what was brought up in the memos.
Clarification question, you said something about setbacks. Um, being modified with approval from adjacent property owners, is that correct?
Yeah, um, in our, I don't have that, I, I can open that in the ordinance. In our, um, pond creation or even the mining section of the ordinance, you can have, um, a lesser setback. If you have, um. Approval of the neighbors, we just don't have that in writing.
Oh, so that's fine setback in your, in your regulation of fifty feet, if you're a P U D or a golf course, if you're doing sand extraction, it turns to a hundred feet. Unless you have written. So we saw that from one neighbor who's actually here, I was the one neighbor who saw it.
But isn't the township of the city your neighborhood, because they own the landfill?
We did not seek it from them, I actually have been unsuccessful in reaching out to the city, I was actually interested that they commented, they, they wouldn't respond to me.
Well, yeah, but it's a problem, because that's. Regrettably, I've become something of an expert on landfill, um, and it is owned by the city and the township. Um, the city owns half of the landfill outright, the other half is owned by the township and the city. Um, we were looking to expand Tales and Trails Park, um, but there's methane. Pipes that were put there by Land Management forty years ago, um. And you can go up to Lowe's, purchase your sofa, climbing tester, and, uh. Those pipes are still producing methane. So before we go digging a hole next to it.
We can get into that, but it was a public comment period, so we'll talk about that when we do our, our planning mission, uh, open up there. So at this, uh, if that's all, Monae?
Yeah.
Yes, so at this point, I'll open it up to, uh, the public comment period and, uh, same rules apply as before. Uh, three minutes as an individual, five as a, uh, group, and please just state your name and your address.
Sure, it's Doug Manning, I would, uh, live at two five six six Lake Shore Drive. And I don't really have any objections to the project, but just wanted to. Raise a couple of questions for the, the general discussion, I think there's a lot of valid questions that Linay has raised. Um, a couple of questions that I would have that, that might be pertinent is, would they be allowed to expand that pond in the future without coming back and getting? A permit and just a concern that this becomes more of a massive project there. And then just a, a simple thing, there's, I know that the, the fencing is not indicated on this, but. I mean, this is a site that basically is unmonitored and you need to ensure that the fencing is secure enough that people can't sneak in and use this, go swimming in this. This pond and some, you know, tragic, tragic accident happens, so then we need to make sure that the fencing is. Sufficient to keep intruders out when this unmonitored land is, is vacant.
Okay, thank you.
Number four sent again, forty eighty four sixty fourth Lake Town, so I really have much of a say, but I do have concerns. About how it might affect, um, the future Sargatac Wilds Nature Preserve with the water. Nature with the sound impact and then also with the fencing and the safety of children or anything, get anything.
Thank you. All right. Well, no, we're just one of the public comment period now, so you, you'll have a chance, we'll. Uh, we'll go on to row three.
Good evening, I'm Bob Roger Poole, uh, I own a property adjacent to Brian Timmer. He actually borders me on two sides, both the, uh. He's got L shape around me, so, so I am his closest neighbor and probably most affected by this, when Brian purchased the property. So a few years ago, Doc Redd was very transparent about what he was doing. I did the same thing twenty, twenty five years ago, I wanted a piece of property where I could, well, we're eleven gosh on lakes, we don't have much room. So I just have a hobby shop there, so I'm, I'm retired, so I'm out there kind of buttering around and. He's been a good neighbor, I have no issue with what he's doing. If you're going to do this, you, you know, what better spot than on the dump, I remember RJ did it. On Blue Star, right next to the Kiwanis years ago, and so he's doing a service that needs to be done. One thing that he brought up though, that I didn't think of is the water level, because I still have a well. I paid for the city water, but I never got it and, uh, years ago. And, um, I never paid for the pipe to run to my property, so. If the water level did drop, I guess I should, could tap it that way, but. Um, I'm not opposed to what he's doing, he's been a good neighbor, good guy. Um, so, that's what I have to say about it, thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Anyone else in? Row three? Row four?
Hi, good evening, my name is Becky Israel, so I live at three four four seven Palmer Drive. And, um, I'm a member of the township and I appreciate the opportunity to share my opinion with you. Tonight and I really am grateful for all the things you do, so thank you. I have a lot of respect for all of you, I appreciate your comments tonight and cleared up a lot of things I was. Um, kind of confused about when I read it all, so I, I'm, some of the things I'm saying may not be as pertinent, but, um. Many years ago, when I was on planning, I voted no for sand mining along Elegant. Road and I really was the only planning commissioner to vote in no, except our board member at the time, but, um. I still believe it was in the best interests of the township for that no vote. We had to create a lot of rules and concessions, so in order to continue with that and, you know, we had problems with it. I'm sure there's an up and downside to this operation and it certainly provides a solution. For a company and it sounds like it provides a solution for the area too. In having, um, groundstone and asphalt. For repair and businesses and et cetera, but, um. The downside to me is the road, a hundred and, or I mean sixty third street. The hours of operation, seven to five, I think that seven o'clock is way too early for families and children and school buses. And I'm very concerned about the safety of, of people along that road with large trucks. Um, also, we have a lovely dog park in that area, we have a new community park just up. We have a new community park just up the road from that area. And I'm thinking, you know, just about the use of that and then the noise and the trucks for people traveling. We're a community that appreciates nature and, and I know we all feel that way. I'm thinking the aesthetic plan for those parks did not include a noisy operation down the road. Um, how will this affect the bees, the honeybees that are right within a mile and a half of this operation? And that's a big concern for me. And, um, the potential track and field trails too. Um, in the area for the schools and then just over the road safety. And can I remind you that we did not allow sand mining trucks on sixty-third street when we did allow the sand mining operation to go in on Old Elegant Road? We diverted all trucks out towards the edge and boundary of the township. We did not want to travel that road. There's a lot of community members that live on all sides of it. So, um, I just wanted to share that with you and I'll be really quick. Okay? Sorry. Um, the other side, we have to consider how this benefits the community.
All right, sorry, sorry.
Okay, job creations, additional revenue. Um, how does it in, improve the quality of life for our residents? That's the biggest question. It's a large part of our township and it's a connection with Blue Star on one end and the river on the other. With all the amenities you've put in place in the area, is this the best we can do? I like to look at the master plan and see if it conforms with that and our five senses. So this is good for air quality. We know it's not. I'm going to just thirty seconds. Okay, air quality. I'm, I'm concerned as a healthcare professional for respiratory illnesses, brain disease. It contributes silicon dust, contributes to brain issues and the noise factor. Um, animals are in the area. Why are we ending this in twenty twenty-seven? Do we not feel like we have a need for this type of material two years down the road? We just need it now. Um, I have contamination concerns about the pond. And there's no visual draw. There's no recreational benefit. Um, I don't know if there's any odor, but we have to protect our wellhead. You all know that. Um.
Thank you.
I know from your many years of work, your goal is to do the best for the township and I thank you again. Okay? Sorry, I'm dining this at home and I wasn't so long. So you know how it goes. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Any someone on Zoom?
Just line.
Okay, we will close the public comment period. And I will open it up to discussion, uh, the planning commissions. So at this point, uh, you know, obviously we can bring the applicant back up, but we have questions for him.
Well, I, I think, uh, I think Linay has put a best of that. You've got two things that are trying to do with this. The one is extractive of the sand, which raises its own issue. For the limited time I've lived in the township, um, we've had problems with, um, sites where sand has been extracted. Um, and it will be, I remember one of my first meetings was, um, dealing with top grade and the issues, um, the animosity, uh, the grief and the aggravation that that presented. Um, but then on top of it, if you, if you're bringing in trucks right next to, um, the Tales and Trail Park where, you know, this summer, the plant, the Parks and Recreation Mission is going to be paving the parking lot. We're going to be improving that site. Um, and I hate to see this go in next door. At the same time that we're probably dropping close to a hundred fifty thousand in improvements at Tales and Trail Parks. And as I mentioned before, um, I need to talk to some engineers about, um, the fact that there is still methane being produced on that site. And I guess the final is, if you're bringing concrete in to be crushed, how do you know that that is just concrete and there's not, um, pipes or asbestos or PFAS that's going to be crushed? And if it's crushed, how much dust is that going to create? And if it's a south wind, it's going to be going straight into Tales and Trail Park.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Those are, those are great concerns. So, uh, I'm going to back up a little bit to the trucks. Can we start with that? And then we'll get into the timeframe and the.
You want to come to the podium?
Excuse me, can I say that someone lost their phone? Oh, okay, that's hard.
Yes, thank you. Perfect, sorry about that, guys. Um, so yardage in and out. We, we do have trucks, we move material in trucks. We were kind of estimating, um, what this would be. So if you go with the fifteen hundred yards in of concrete asphalt, that is roughly fifty-two trucks. That's one truck per week. You go with three thousand, that's two trucks per week down the road. It's not on the. We, I want to be kind of make that clear and then the, all the application, everything is set up for, uh, like a for sale business from, like you were talking about. That's not what we're trying to do here. These are my trucks. They're not open to the public. It's not a collection for everybody to dump whatever they want. This is, um, you know, like, we're tearing up driveways for the township because they're moving right away. That concrete would, would come there and wait to be crushed. So the, the truck driver we're trying to reduce, it's not a large volume of, of, of traffic. So we do have, uh, and then the sand. So we put, and I apologize if this created confusion, but there's so many requirements for a pond to have a one-year limitation. And so I kind of put it in there too, because I don't want to dig it all and have a huge sand pile sitting there blowing all over property and all over everybody's property. It was, this isn't a future development. So we're maybe, we, maybe we stretch that to a three-year for the sand. And we dig it as we need it, um, to avoid a huge stockpile that creates all the messy issues, right? That's, that's what we were trying to get away at. So your, your, your ponds kind of have a one-year limitations. We're kind of asking to maybe stretch that a little bit. Um, for the purpose of not making a giant mess or disrupting the neighbors. Answer your questions?
It, it addresses it. I'm, I'm waiting to hear from Daniel. He's going to contact an engineer. He's going to go test. Um, they're going to hire a testing company to go check the pipes out and the, um, the landfill, which is your neighbor, uh, as to, um, how much methane is coming out of the pipes? Is it dangerous? I mean, I resisted the temptation as a sixteen-year-old, the first thing I would have done was take advantage, drop it down. So I, I have grown up a little better. Thank you, thank you. But, um.
So again, when we were buying the property, I heard a, an environmental testing firm from Holland called S E S C. To do the, I was very concerned, right? I've never owned a parcel of land next to a landfill, especially on the one. They're very concerning. They pulled all the eagle logs, which are public information for all the testing. They did really pretty good website. There's a case number for that specific landfill in Hazemore. And then we did, um, four samples all along the back. Um, and along the front, both for depth of water, materials. Um, their expert opinion was movement of contamination is going to deter, uh, habit in the water. I could grab my hands, we have the waters, what's going to move the contaminants. And they took water samples at each level. I, I believe the water table areas. I want to give numbers, but is it in excess of twenty feet, um, coming out of landfill? Um, and they tested for PFAS and all the warning stuff. And I can make that report available for you guys. Um, they'd be both a phase one and a phase two. We spent a lot of money on it to make sure that there was no contaminants there.
It would definitely be moved by that.
Yes, it wasn't required in the single and happy to provide that to a pretty involved. Um, to also address a question that came up, uh, Linay brought it up. We did receive a violation as a public center on our property. We bought the property. It's my first property. I was very excited. We hold it. There's an existing driveway, like camper and all of there. And then we, we started hauling this concrete from a, from a local to, to not realize I needed a permit for that. We, we then stopped and went into compliance. Uh, so we do have an existing pile of concrete asphalt there that's been sitting there, um, kind of waiting for this. So if it doesn't happen, we'll have to dispose of that. Uh, we, we would seek, uh, an approved driveway permit. There's an existing culprit there that we're currently using. It's along the hundred thirty-fourth. I think the road condition has some issue there that they need to address. There's telephone poles right across our cover in the ditch. I think the water flow goes the wrong way on the ditch, but it's, I don't kind of wrote, uh, elegant kind of road condition issue that we'll deal with when we get a larger driveway from there. Um, just to make it easy accessible for vehicles to get into. Uh, we talked about yardage. Uh, we talked about sand piles. Uh, that was the reason for the date in there. Uh, I picked two years. Um, if, if the planning commission wants to see that longer for the sand pond operation, we would appreciate that. They give us an opportunity not to create large pile of blown sand. But that type of stuff, um, to haul off. We are flexible on ours. At the beginning, this is, this is not, you know, people were work here to work every, every, every day. And you get one or two trucks. Uh, we had to pick hours to put on them. So we are very flexible on, on hours and fencing and absolutely alive with that. And that goes forward, our seasonal crushing hours as well. We want to be a good neighbor. We don't want to upset anybody. Um, there are two, two folks that we live with, within the area. We want to be good neighbors enough. So, uh, we'd be flexible on it.
How will we quantify like the sound would be like at the dog park when you're crushing concrete? I heard you said, like, it's not a building, it's above the street, but I think dog street's not on the table today and it's further away. This being next door recreation, I mean, that we've rested heavily. I'm trying to gauge how I could, how we could transport ourselves into the future and see how loud that is from that location. Sounds like your neighbor is very concerned, but people who go to a park. It'd be a shame if it was loud from seven to five.
Well, and if I understand this right, so you're going to move the, uh, the crusher in, onto the property one time per year?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So then that crushing operation will go for how long? A week?
What, probably less than a week.
So as the crushing operation goes, I mean, think about, I mean, there's large chunks of concrete, not going to be quiet. You know, you're going to hear it from the dog park.
My, my friend owns an aggregate company out to the side of the state that, that to the crusher, like crushing. It's incredibly loud. But they're in the middle of this gigantic piece of property in the center and they did it kind of dotted up pit. And so it doesn't resonate into the neighborhood. This isn't, fences are going to stop it, leaves on trees aren't going to stop it. It's, it's a very loud operation. It's helpful to know that it's planned for only a week here. That says something.
Is there a better time during the year?
I, I don't know. I really don't know.
Park can mention year round. So, I mean, may, maybe more so in the summer, you know, use more in the summer, but.
I guess I'd love to have, um, a, a location where we could, yeah, in the next month, go listen to one of these. Like if I'm.
I'm getting it. It's, it's hard to quantify.
Yeah.
You have one right to the northeast of the dog park this morning.
Get the, get the information to Linay and, and we'll go over.
I, I, we probably get some decimal information on it.
And then you kind of start your crushing?
I, I drive by, that's six of their every day. But it's never running when I'm driving by.
Concrete asphalt, they don't do sand there. There's a permit manual. The township probably, we bought a hundred percent of their materials, previous to the stockpile from the plant that the township just purchased.
So, yeah, just so, so they bring in a big crusher, which has a conveyor belt. They dump it on, it takes conveyor belt in it and it dumps it into a, a hopper. And then that hopper has a, you know, it crushes the, the concrete and then it splits it out into a nice pile. Like in a good, nice sized aggregate that they can use in roads. So, I mean, it's, you know, it, it, it's an operation, but but it, like you said, it's only, you know, it's one week per year, uh, three days per year, whatever it is. But, but you will, when it's going on, just so you know, I mean, you will. If you're, if you're in the dog park, you know, that's kind of what we're talking about here. You will.
With the two piles we have now, once those are crushed, how many truckloads can you estimate? How many truckloads that would be to carry that existing material out of there? Do you have a way to estimate that?
Yeah.
They're recording and would this be consistently every day of the week until it's gone?
No. Used throughout the year. Sometimes it's, it's more consistent.
So it's only the crushing that's going to be involved?
Yes.
For the one week and then take it out as usual.
So you gather the material throughout the year, put it on site, crush it. Oh, I'm sorry. You did say that.
So, uh, we were actually second place on the dog park improvements and it has all crushed concrete underneath them and paved like the line to the dog park. Uh, which is unfortunately going to be brought in from outside the community.
What is the height of your current, uh, concrete pilot currently there?
Currently there? Uh, we kind of pushed it out of ways. I guess it's about twenty.
Okay, so that would be about the size.
Size.
On height to that you would expect that all your stockpiles would be about, how about that?
I don't think anybody wants to see them. That was kind of what I thought. So we, we understand that.
What, what part does it stand for in your outreach? That you'd be excavating or not?
So Sogetuck City, Douglas City and Sogetuck Township, we do a fair amount of work. Both for the township, the cities and residents. And then there's a sand island here. Um, you, you don't have any, um, that is virtually available. It's very expensive in this community and it has to be brought in from outside of the community. So if you go to the north, um, you have to go all the way to humans' eight eighth pit. If you go to the east, you have to go all the way to Dunningville. And if you go to the south, you have to go like our best end side. Um, that's kind of your, your range. So our, our idea was a slow build, um, to help fuel some of the residence projects that we have going on in this market. In the material area world, guys, trucking is more expensive and so it costs more to move it around.
I want to see what's on the other side of the highway. Only houses are over there. I get about the park, but I wonder if there are homes. Yeah, there's some, yeah, thanks. On the other side of the highway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I believe the residence is right where the hundred thirty-fourth is. There's a trailer there. Uh, on the right, that'd be the closest one to us on the right. And then Rogers, two buildings are there on the left. The one with the brown roof in the front is abandoned. Roger shared a fun fact, all street bulletins were printed in that building to the mid nineties. Um, and Mike with the Chicago Car Club is there occasionally. RAF Electrics buildings for sale. And we get, we get a lot of state police traffic down there. Hundred thirty-fourth roundabout tends to be a hangout for the state police, I think, doing reports.
So then, as you stated, you know, the parking portion of this is expensive. So I envision your operation going, uh, you, ideally, you, you start off, you, you haul in the materials. Uh, you bring in the crusher. Now you're going to crush piles. So you're going to remove this pile over here. You're going to crush it. You're going to create a nice aggregate over here. And then as your operation goes, I see you coming in, uh, dumping rough, neatly be crushed material, hopefully loading. Rough, neatly be crushed material, hopefully loading, go to the aggregate, and then round robin and fall out, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So, uh, so I mean, you'd have a, you'd leave a loader on site.
Uh, yes.
Probably.
Yeah, I think a front loader would be appropriate, a week, a week in front of it.
Will there be a place for the trucks to turn around, or will they be backing up?
Uh, we we wanted them to turn around the property, so no nothing on one hundred thirty fourth, that would make them dangerous. Uh, always.
I just think.
My own thoughts, I've always found truck drivers would do better going forward. So, we we would, we'd have space for a truck to turn around on.
I have, I have several concerns. I grate, appreciate Mr. Paul, is it Paul? Uh, is that is the only person that has, he verbally told us that he has no objections, but. Um, having a written, as as one A is, um, mentioned, as a r- written, uh, notification, notarized that he's in favor of of the, um. Operation. Um, you mentioned about the contaminants and that report is going to be critical for us. Um, in regards to deciding what might the township might be doing, but what also that you have, is that we don't have that. We would need that, uh, at least I feel like we need it. The dust mitigation, uh, again, you you mentioned how it's done, but certainly don't have a plan for that anywhere that. And how that would be completed, like in the fencing, um, uh, it's not shown on your, um, site plan. Um, I'm really concerned about the restoration plan, we don't have one, that is required. And so, uh, you know, and how we as a township might consider the outdoor discovery, um. Center in helping us understand the restoration plan that of that pond. Um, and I would encourage us to really think about that. I certainly do, the hours of operation that we certainly can, you know, talk about as as well, and there are several concerns associated from our engineers and. Um, you know, some of these permits, I know that sometimes we ask that these applicants. That we leave it to staff that whose certain permits are, um, are actually. Completed, but I there really is a sense that there are some permits in this particular case because of the operation that we should see. Um, the drain commissioner, the stormwater management, all those things are really important as we as we go forward, so I would rather see. Uh, soil erosion, sediment control, that I understand that. Those might be done afterwards and stuffed up the staff, but I think as a commissioners, we should, we should see those.
Should we also include Cal Lake in that, because that's that's the other.
There was no mention about Cal Lake in here, so I I'm, that would, I'm not sure what we'd be asking for, so.
Well, that's the other neighbor.
That's the other neighbor?
Yeah, Cal Lake is just south of the, uh, landfill site.
But again, is that too far away? I I don't know, would that might be something that, uh, leave that to Lin- Lin A, I guess, an engineer is whether that's needed, but. Uh, is that really too far away? I I don't know that, from distance wise. As well as the driveway permit, I I really do think we need to see those things. And not wait.
Cal Lake is.
I mean, so, those are my only comments.
Okay.
Can I address one of those comments?
Uh, yeah.
I believe the restoration plan was in there, it's.
I didn't, I didn't see it.
It's written, um, because the pond restoration requirements, you guys have done a great job while mining them. It it defines the type of topsoil, the type of seed that you have to have on the setback requirement, it's a just a recreation of the zone. Um, that is in there.
I I I I understand that, but also knowing that we've had some issues with the restoration and prior, um, on, maybe on, and. Uh, without having actually seen what you're saying, I understand that that this is what you're going to do, it's. I I find that. Pardon me?
It's attached in the permit application, right?
I saw that, I think what my name is.
It's a narrative, it's not a.
It's just a restoration plan to be.
So, there's actually two ways that that's been adjusted in the application. One is in the, uh, the verbiage that was submitted, so there was a document that was operation plan. And restoration plan, and the operation plan talks about a lot of the things like. Um, you know, the storage files, the alphas of of operation, so except for the three thousand cubic yards they just came from. There is a restoration plan that talks about, um, the the seeding and restoration, the topsoil and so forth. But then in addition to that, the, um, site plan submitted package has an entire sheet. Dedicated to soil erosion, sedimentation control and restoration. So I think it's, um.
The drawings have a table on C one oh two, and I, I think the dates incorrect, but it says seeding and stabilization by August of twenty twenty five.
So, um, yeah, C one oh two is the grading sort of the and sort of the large control plan. That's got a number of things, it it talks about the temporary measures. Um, and then the schedule that in there is related to that initial construction and those temporary measures. But then you've got restoration notes on that drawings and, uh, keys that indicate where permanent seeding is going to be happening. Where mulch is going to be placed, where siltsets has to be placed. And then the restoration notes talk about what type of restoration is going to be happening in the different areas based on the slopes. That are, you know, the the constructed slopes of the pond and of the the flatter areas that are not within the pond. So, there's a lot of information on that sheet related to restoration. And I guess if there's anything additional specifically regarding restoration plan that's needed, I'm happy to provide that. But the ordinance, uh, does mention, you know, your restoration plan, and I believe this between this sheet and then the language in that on the one page. We've more than covered what is typically a semi-recreation, but so happy to go through any more details about that with you. But I agree that that is definitely something that that should be included.
I always make that remark also, because Lin A and number number two or six, site restoration plan has not been provided. So our our township planner does not believe that there's a site restoration plan.
And and I guess Lin A happy to let the to provide additional information, I'm not sure if there was. Some clarity that we needed to provide to you, but again, I I believe we have provided, if these two elements do not satisfy that, then I'm, you know, we'd be happy to understand why. Thank you.
I I think that, I'm. Did you answer whether the? We talked about how it's basically kind of two things, the sand mining with the pond. And then the material recycling, is there a end date for the material recycling, special use?
We we did not see an end date for that.
Okay.
She is part of our kind of a commitment to be here. And then the pond, they would, we, as I covered earlier, it'd be two years. If additional, understanding some of that issues, we're watching. There's things that we need to be able to address that. Um, we may have to do that. Again, this is not meant to be a development for us or a fling, we're, we're here to be working.
May I ask if you are, you own your crushing equipment, or are you leasing it?
So, um, there's third parties that come in and do that.
So so you're, the reason I asked that is from a business standpoint, you're incentivized to get that done with quickly.
Very quickly. Yes.
They don't want to drag this out.
No, not at all. Um, do you want to establish enough material to justify that you need in, and you want them in and out? Very quickly.
That's to the benefit of that, thanks a lot.
Yeah, we we do not smart. It's too too small in person for a site.
I'm curious about all of this and the wellhead protection areas, so in order to control the dust, would need to use water?
Yes.
Use oil or?
Correct.
So what is your source of water there on that side?
Um, if if there is two fire engines down one hundred thirty four, we can get temporary here from from Cal Lake. Probably open the black name of their mind. But that'd be our our goal, not to take our own water there and just use Cal Lake water and get a meter in on it, get them back over there.
And regarding dust, I feel like the larger concern for dust is not crushing operation. I think that that you can manage, you know, fairly easily over a three day period. It's the in and out of the trucks, and then once the road, you know, you're going to pump up that dirt into the, even if you put down, you know, asphalt or crush asphalt or whatever, you're going to. You're going to pump up that, you know, that the sand and the dirt into the into the road, and then as the trucks run in and out, you're going to have dust. I think that probably is a more, I would see more of a dust control. It or maybe not even dust control issue, but a public nuisance possibility.
I I think to add to that would be mazacre the track out to make sure that we're good makers.
That's, yeah, before, especially at a really big, you know, drag a flood on the road.
Yeah, that that is definitely not what we want to do. So out of the two products that would be crushed there, the perfect asphalt is spirit, new crushed concrete, dust control. Topper and driveway, you're seeing that on a lot of residential driveways in this community is the crushed asphalt. That's what the township chose for dugout, for that very purpose. Uh, that's a new, a new trial for the township and the road commission. Um, um, it looks like on the ground. Um, it meets the trend of that, and we just put the only one that way around from there, it gets you options for it. But we'd want to be good neighbors to that.
Is that somebody you'd be willing to, I maybe it isn't here, John, but, uh, as far as like the sediment erosion control plan and maintaining the access ingrained segress, uh. You know, for dust control?
Yeah, I believe there is a note, and there's a lot of notes, and they're very small, and you don't have a full size drawing, but. Um, if that's not addressed, I'd be happy to ensure it is.
And I believe for the the crush, the sand mining operation, we need a purely, um, soil erosion plan. From Algen County, the health department administers those, and Algen County. As an excavator, we we file for. About one hundred fifty of them with Algen County insurance, um, and part of that is dust control, crackout, all those measures that they do come inspect. Um, they've got health professional on their job sector, from the, from the health department, and also from the, um, drain commission office.
So there is a note on drawing that addresses, um. Maintaining and sweeping tractor material from roadways under the soil erosion and sedimentation control notes. Uh, note number thirteen. So, yeah, up in this section. Okay, well, yeah, that's it, and then also the the question of just keeping that, leave rest segress, uh. Dust control.
Yep.
We can, we can clarify that that also is part of it.
I think it should be clarified that this would happen ongoing through the entire use of of the recycling facility. I think it would be helpful to kind of separate, again, the activities that are required. To happen as part of the mining, sand mining. And pond creation, separate from the recycling facility use, which is, you know. In perpetuity essentially, um, unless we have an end date on that.
Yeah, I agree.
It's still not clear about the quantity of materials, so. You said three thousand cubic yards, is that three thousand cubic yards of the recycle crushed concrete coming in? And then at some point, it would be leaving once it's processed? And then what about the sand? How much sand?
Well, our estimate at this time, as you stated earlier, to support bringing the crusher in, would be fifteen hundred yards of material. Which is about fifty truck worth. Um, if it was to go to three thousand, obviously, we don't want to take the pile higher and just get a little bit wider. Um, and that'd be about a hundred trucks, quarter years of two to three weeks of material coming in. Um, and that's, that's kind of a guess on activity in the community. It it doesn't pay to truck material in from outside the community, so it's. Um, you know, when when they're doing the demolition at the dog park coming in the spring, that material has to go somewhere. Um, be a great place to put it, right, our question's. The. What, I'm looking at, what is your second question? Material was the first one?
I, it's it's a little hard for me to hear on Zoom, and I hope the planning commission's hearing it and others, so it's. Fifteen hundred cubic yards of of material from driveways and whatnot would be brought in. And then that would be processed, and then that same fifteen hundred would be leaving. It's for a total of three thousand, basically per year, which is about a hundred trucks, is that right?
Fifteen hundred in and fifteen hundred out is about fifty trucks.
Fifty trucks total, and then what about the sand? How many cubic yards are you taking out?
Yeah, I don't, I don't actually have that quantity either, I I apologize, we can get that quantity.
Okay.
So as far as the. The three thousand yards, you say that's a hundred truckloads?
It's about fifty years, about.
Well, they're fairly big sized trucks.
So much. Not trains, we don't, we don't use trains, but so much single wheel, so much.
Okay, maybe, I'm just thinking, I know. It's my experience with, um, absolute, like, on earth, and we usually got like twelve, fifteen yards in a truck, but maybe is that just heavier?
It is, you can, so we got a lot more on it. Our 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 timing trucks, all four axle trailers, um. And we in Michigan enjoy our limit on roads, part of the reason why our roads are that good. Um, and you can haul in the four axle trailers, you can haul various lightweight material that gets roughly thirty yards of space.
Okay. Okay. Uh, and then, I mean, so we understand, I. I would think your truck traffic is going to be based on your job.
Potentially.
So any other job that requires a hundred yards of material versus a job that requires twenty yards of material. You know, that's, I'm going to say that, you know, there's going to be a difference there as to as far as the traffic coming in and out.
You could go, you could go weeks without seeing a truck.
One day, and then one week you could see, you know, seventy five, or just whatever the numbers, uh, more fluxing your use.
A a great example of visualization for you guys, uh, I keep referring this, but we're doing a dugout project right now. And that is taking two twenty five hundred tons of crushed asphalt. From the top crater plant, or to to dug out further township, and we have one truck, just not running back and forth. Making sense, it's bringing some stuff back to the plant when we're cutting, ready, taking off foils, and it's coming back. That whole operation is going to last two weeks. And that's it. And then there's some trucks. That that will complete our whole, our entire pile for probably two years at our smallest, so.
The same thing will happen with, as far as pond goes.
Yes.
Uh, so you would excavate the pond, the pond based on the need as needed.
We thought that was a better solution, instead of trying to dig it all, and and a couple of the other ones that I know the township has their problems with, where it's a sale for the public, and you get all kinds of trucks in it. We we thought it'd be better to use for, not for public sale, for our own use. Control it a little more, and not, that makes sense, just what we have wants, yeah.
Is there any other questions?
I'm not, just to use, but there's a lot of questions.
Yeah, I, sorry, I I only kind of digging into the details, because I just want everybody to understand, you know, what the operation is and. And how, you know, what's going to happen there. I mean, I I have, uh. As far as the, you know, the excavating the pond over time, I mean, I I personally don't see it as an issue, I don't think a pond would be required in this situation, because you're not. You know, you're not even creating any, you know, previous surface or something. Uh, so I don't think it's going to change the drainage, you know, as far as on site. That the, I would, we already discussed this, I mean, as far as the soil borings and the, uh, this the samples, the the environmental samples, definitely would look at. Want want to see those come to the township, so we could have our engineer take a look at it and verify that, you know, they they don't seem concerned with it. engineer take a look at it and verify that, you know, they, they don't seem concerned with it. Um, the, uh, the restoration plan we talked about, uh, those are eagle samples that have been already done, is that correct? Soil sample.
Did they go to Eagle? I mean, they, they, they've done that.
There, there's two different ones, though. The eagle ones are available for the landfill.
Yeah.
We, we have our own for our property. So the eagle has fifty monitoring wells on the property or something and they go sample it all the way back to the seventies, you can, three dollars.
We're talking about on their property.
Yes. Yes. Uh, cause as our engineer brought up, and it, you know, there is a concern with, if there is contamination that's migrating, then we know the water level fluctuates. Uh, so it would be, uh, you know, it'd be important to verify that there is no contamination that would be impacting that pond if it were to be excavated, uh, cause obviously contamination in the, in the water would be uh, it would be, could be a problem. I mean, we want, we wouldn't want anybody in that, you know, getting in the water.
Evaporation was one of the issues, right? It goes into the pond and it evaporates and it's airborne.
So that definitely could be a problem, yes. Yeah, so, so, yeah, we, we want our engineer to take a look at that. I, I do want to circle back to Ken's comment regarding the, uh, the setbacks and requiring uh, requiring permission from the neighbors, uh, to reduce the amount of setback and I mean, raise the point where, uh, the city of Sagatuck is a neighbor. And we haven't heard from them.
Right, so I'm, and that'll, that'll be one of the things I follow up in the next month. And I also want to take this to the parts of the right commissions and let them know that, um, this is being proposed just south of us. And, um, part of the, this dog park is right along one hundred thirty-fourth street, so trucks running up and down there. It's gonna be right next to where people are walking their dogs or throwing the ball or doing your dog type things. Um, and that, that part of the park is used a lot more than like the northern part where we put in the trail up towards, you know, their cell tower, um. But that part of the dog park is a smaller fenced area where, you know, there are a lot of people who use that every day.
Yeah. Well, I, you know, and I'm more concerned meeting the requirement of reducing the setback. And so that all the neighbors have then, uh, and I know we got one here that's, that's still paid where that, and maybe everybody is, I, I don't know, I didn't. But, uh, it'd be nice to, you know, make sure that that's satisfied before we allow a reduction in the setback. Uh, if I'm, if I'm understanding this. And then, uh, I would also, I didn't see anything really from the county, which, I think we addressed it a little bit, like, maybe we are waiting on a, uh, a permit, road permit, but I mean, my question would be is that, we talked about the, you know, Michigan has nice, uh, you know, relaxed weight limits and getting back to the dog park is, you know, we have these big trucks, uh, semi trucks that are running up and down that road, is that real capable? Uh, to handle that, is it gonna pulverize the asphalt as you run up and down there with it? You know, the additional road traffic and, and I don't know what it's built out of, I, I really have no idea. I sort of, I just would.
My question, back from the county. That was actually part of the reason we, we bought this is it's class A. So if you go on the road commission map, it's for class A road, meaning it's built to their standards, it's designed for truck traffic.
Okay.
Are you talking about one thirty-four or are you talking about sixty there?
Both.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And so we'd obviously also have to comply with Michigan weight limits and, you know, frost law, uh, frost laws, you would see trucks there in the spring.
And my concern would be is the road disintegrating and it's the main, you know, it's his main road where everybody's going to use the dog park and it's kind of a showpiece for the township and and so it would reflect badly on the township this, if that road fell apart. And then, then we have to wait for the county to do something about it, which, you know, that could be a longer process, once we get in that list, so. Uh, there was my comment on the road to, uh, so we, we talked about the requirement of fencing. I guess I have a hard time understanding how fencing would work on this property because we wouldn't want to impact the trees. Uh, I mean, you've already removed, if there's a trees that are removed there now, is there any more additional trees going to be removed? I just took a quick drive out there today just to do a little.
Oh, did you pull this?
Yeah. I, I don't believe so. Maybe a couple, but, I mean, it kind of looked like it was.
Where the pond, only where the pond is, where the pond goes across the back, there'll be some trees removed there.
Yeah.
But not in the buffer area against the landfill, I mean, or the, I get profit placed there. Leave the trees in the, it's like setback zone where the piles are.
Yeah, it's kind of where the, yeah, so my, I guess then maybe the fence just goes along the, the limits of the pond. But we're not digging the pond right away, uh, I don't know, I, to me, your fencing seems a little tricky. Uh, and then even like along the road and, and, you know, I, I don't really quite understand what the fence required would be yet. Uh, I, I think what we would do is, um, we can talk and coordinate, come up with a strategy for securing the site and update the, the site plan accordingly. Um, cause you're right, we don't want to cut down trees just to make room to put fence in. You, you put fence, you destroy roots. Um, you know, it's, it can be pretty disruptive, but we have our disturbed area of the site and we can uh, perhaps contain that within a secure area without fencing the entire property.
You're talking about the pond specifically?
So the pond and, and the stockpiles and where the processing plant is going to, to live when it shows up for that one week. Those are the things that need to be secure. The undisturbed, you know, wooded areas don't necessarily need to be secure. And so maybe that fence, uh, looks something like that. So we'll come up with a strategy and, and update our site plan accordingly.
Yeah, because, yeah, because this is gonna be an ongoing thing, I, it'd be nice to have a, like a security plan, you know, part added to, uh, added to the engineering plan so that it's something that we could really see, um.
Uh, I think, Lenee, we would, especially if we're, uh, if a pond is going to be constructed over a three year period, we, we would require well, I'd say two to whatever we decide on, say it's two years or three years, but uh, whatever the timeframe is, we would require a, a bond uh, to be put in place to ensure that, you know, everything is, the pond is built as, as planned.
Yeah, there would probably be, I would think, again, kind of separating these two things, a, a bond for the sand mining and, and pond as well as the material recycling bond as well, so. Um, we, we'd want to take all these notes and suggestions to our township attorney to draft up probably two resolutions. Um, or maybe it's one with two, two sections, but kind of keeping these, um, uses separate since one is, would be ending and one would be ongoing.
Okay. Um, okay, I think that's a more common job. I guess at this point, I feel more comfortable with regarding the, the permission from the neighbors, um, for I, I would like to see that. And then it's, it's one of the things also on the, I suspect that based on what you said, the county approvals probably are fairly simple maybe, but uh, but I, I, I think I would like to see, especially because the setbacks are directly impact site plan. And so whatever is allowable setback.
So the neighbor, I was just trying to go to the neighbor referring to City Sagatuck.
Is that, is that the only one that has many issues?
Yeah, so there, there are two properties where we are proposing to reduce setback. One is that, um, yeah, this, this north line, if you will, right here, which is adjacent to Rogers and so there's, and then, um, the west line and the south line, which are both adjacent to Atlanta. We're not proposing a reduced setback on the east side.
Okay.
So this is the full one hundred foot setback. Southeast, or I'm sorry, southwest and north would be the reduced fifty, and there we have a total of two hundred dollars.
So it would just be the City of Sagatuck?
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll get with Daniel because, and my name is Tuesday, because um, right now, the legal, if you go to the county, it's actually the village of Sagatuck owns that property. You and I looked at them together, uh, but, uh, they did some more research and actually it turns out that one of those parcels is owned jointly between the city and the township. And, but I'm gonna make darn sure which properties they'll draw before I come back next month, and then I can tell you who are the neighbors, um, that we have to seek permission from.
Okay. At this point, we have that somewhat comments, and we have that ability to uh, recommend for approval, uh, to the table or postpone based on what we've talked about tonight, so, um.
An approval of conditions is up.
Approval with conditions is sure.
I'd move the table. I think we've got a lot of information to collect.
Are you gonna tell me you can postpone?
I'll, I'll probably postpone. Fantastic.
Well, let's list all the requirements that we'd like to see, so that we can create on what we want.
I think Dave just did the, um, the, the, did he refer to the engineering reports?
Um, well, I think from a simple is, if you look at the report from, uh, Lenee has provided us, she's part of many things that are not provided, that their chief outlook's not provided, and I didn't see the, as well as our engineer, I, I, you know, if you look at those two reports, I think that pretty much covers it.
I agree, and I think, um, if we submit it to the attorney for to prepare our resolution, Lenee can review it and make sure she's not missing anything. So.
Yeah, I just, a, a couple of things that would be the, um, the decibel information, I don't think that was in the, the report. The road, sweeping the road and, and that maintenance, um.
Looking the road was on the soil, on the soil.
Oh, was it? Okay, okay.
When you say the decibel information, like, are you, can we be, can we try to be more specific with what we're concerned about?
For the crushing operation, the crushing week.
I'm good, but are we saying the decibel information study that would provide the information of what the decibels would be at the dog park? Is that what we're asking for or are we asking for the decibel information standing next to the piece of equipment?
I think it's up to you all, um, I was thinking maybe at the property lines or some type of report that about the crusher itself and, you know, I don't know if there's some type of, um, I don't know, like guide that's produced by the crushing, uh, machine operator or some I'm, I'm not really sure if there's any, any information in our best practice.
And I agree with regards to the property lines, and so we have done, you know, it's, it's a widening, it's, you know, not to go down beyond the property line, so the, the dashboard of the property line, which would also then take care of it would be reduced in the dog park.
Right.
Yes, so the property line.
Right, so I was gonna, just wanted to be specific about that.
Thanks, Gordon.
Well, well, enter Ken motion.
Took a crack at it, I'll move and postpone before the, uh, Alkin to provide to you that information we have just discussed the last five minutes. What's that is, as contained in the engineering letters and in the report filed in A and the additional information as to legal ownership and the decibel line, uh, decibel, uh, level at the property line.
Are we requesting boring test two?
Well, they're already, I just want to see that.
We need to get.
And then I think that's in the engineering report, if I'm not mistaken.
Somebody's seen.
Yeah, it was not, it's not a requirement, it's middle, I think it was just in practice, it's the last.
Yeah, just the lead is concerned.
Yeah. It was now acquired, that's why it wasn't.
So are we requesting decibel level at all four property lines, just to be accurate? Is that what we're asking for? All of the four sides of the property?
Well, I, I think we've heard from the name, I, 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 we would have to have it from the size unless we have something innotarized, I think what Lenee spoke to, um, uh, through the document in, in writing that the neighbor has no problem with that, if he wants to submit that in writing.
We could still see that, the plan with the decibel, I don't, I don't think it's gonna whether you get, you're gonna.
I think you'll get that information from the manufacturer of the crusher and you can just say a hundred feet over is this property line, that's the decibel level. Three hundred feet is this decibel level.
Yeah.
Because there's neighbors beyond just that neighbor to the west, there's people on the other side of the road.
Right.
Well, again, I, you know, in regards to the property lines of this parcel, because they are by the road and the road is loud.
Yeah.
Yeah, I ninety-six, so, uh, you know, this.
Different kind of sound.
Yeah, but it's still loud, so, you know, thinking about in the immediate area of this side of of the interstate, I'm, I'm, I, I'm sorry for the other people on the other side of the interstate, but they're dealing with the interstate noise.
Yeah.
So.
I have to agree with that. I've had experience with, um, crushing, you know, vehicles and metal. Getting a lot of complaints about how loud that is, and I had an accused engineer come out at nighttime to measure the decibel level and the truck traffic was much louder than the crushing operation. So.
Good thing they don't stay on the road, if they don't, there's rumbles, they're terrible. You can hear those from a motor break.
They came a break.
It's louder, but it's not consistent.
So, so, well, it's pretty consistent, this was that, um, the metal recycling process in, um, where you take your, you know, I didn't want to name, but, yeah.
So there is.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion to postpone, uh, with, uh, Lenee's comments on, on this, uh, kind of a report.
In engineering, yeah, you just write nine hundred.
I support.
Okay, any, uh, comments, questions? Okay, and this one on the road.
Uh, Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Brown, yes. And Ms. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eileen?
Yes.
Mr. Stanis?
Yes.
Mr. McFadden?
Yes.
And Ms. Webster, yes. Okay.
Thank you for, thank you, it was a good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get your entries, pregame that.
Where, where is the process for a response?
Contact Lenee Director.
All right, what was the question? The process for resubmital?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, it, you have to resubmit by the deadline for the meeting, for the upcoming meeting.
That meeting is June twenty-fourth. So does that change the, um, what would be there submitted for June twenty-fourth meeting, what if they would have to submit by?
By, um, well, it would technically be next week Tuesday by ten in the morning.
Enjoy your week.
All right, that'd be the twenty-seventh, Trista can tell.
Twenty-fourth, okay, the meeting date has changed.
She said next week Tuesday, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry for that, yes.
All right, ten a, yeah, ten AM on the twenty-seventh.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to old business, uh, singing on, and we move on to communications, uh, first one's correspondence and we do have, uh, I am on the correspondence regarding, uh, Bootar Ben LLC requesting a use determination reconsideration. I believe everybody has seen, you had requests.
Absolutely requesting, I have a mind, but I.
Yes, uh, we do have, uh, and here to, uh, you know. And here, uh, anybody's got any questions or clarification regarding, uh, regarding requests?
Well, I'm happy to speak to the first one since it doesn't affect, is regarding, uh, we've got conflict of interest. Uh, and, and, yes, I am a member of a property and sanctuary trail. However, I am across the street and I'm over three hundred feet from the supposed, um, site and, uh, and. Consultation with, uh, Lene and, uh, the ownership attorney, uh, they are not. Saying that I have a conflict of interest. I'm not, just because of like this is from the, the site.
I had a conversation with Lene as well, and she said that the attorney did, uh, review, you know, that the determination reconsideration did not seem. With interest in the, uh, they reviewed the minutes, thought everything was in order. And did not really see the reasons that we would have to reconsider, but for the reference, we weren't given a reason. I was not.
Right, she was absent, you did not.
Yeah, so I can, I actually, yeah, I cannot speak to all the center of the meeting other than what I read in the minutes, so.
Well, the other consideration, if I read that correctly, is they're asking us to review the, uh, the definition of, uh. Of local commercial, if I, that's how I'm not mistaken in regards to their, their document and whether in fact. Uh, there's been a misinterpretation of of what local commercial and what we felt that that, um. The use was within that C one. Did I read that correctly in that letter? That's what I got. And so whether in fact, you know, in regards to commas and grammatically and and so forth. Is whether in fact it does, in fact, really, can occur in C one or is it a C two? And and I will stand by my decision in regards to looking at the. The business, it's a regional business, it's global. Uh, and so therefore it doesn't really fit within the C one history. Or in the C two, as according to our zoning ordinance, and actually if you go back into the master plan, it also talks about that, even though we've changed. In our, uh, ordinance between C one and C two from the original twenty sixteen master plan, but if you look in regards to how it's. Um, stated in the master plan, it's, it's a regional, um, business. And, and it actually goes in, from what I read, it's C two. So I stand by my original decision.
I see no reason, uh, I was one of the other votes who joined you and I, I, I thought we explored it adequately, um, and. It was, it was not a local type of business.
And I was the third and I agree, I I would have expected they went. Yeah, we can lose our appeal to C B. And that is an end.
And that could definitely be their. So I guess what the question is, should the planning commission? Do we want to, I don't know, Renee, do you need a motion in regards to the asking the reconsideration? Or do we just let it be as is?
Take no actions.
Take no action.
Um, I think you you might want to make a a motion one way or the other, see if it's supported. Um, and then have a vote.
I, I guess I would say, uh, it wasn't me, I was involved in all the discussion, pretty all the details. However, I, I guess I, my concern, uh, and it's not for this project. Specifically, but in general, I, it's, you know, if we reconsidered, you know. I mean, we had form, the planning commission building, and, you know, there's an avenue to go to the Z D A. I just, I mean, I I don't see enough reason to, uh, to what I'm looking at here anyways, to, uh. To reconsider, and I I just worry about precedent, then I said, too, if we, uh.
So do we move to receive and file and take no action?
Let's, I was.
I think there's a motion. We've been, we've, we've, we've received the letter, we have filed it, but we are taking no further action.
So then it's a motion?
Yeah, so.
The motion, the motion was.
But you could argue the first item is to discuss the review.
Right.
The second item is just what's already been gone over last month.
But I think we've heard the, the explanation that there is no conflict.
Okay.
And we are comfortable with the determination to free the plane as to the nature quality of this position, so. And then getting to what Mr. Eileen said is that we don't want to necessarily create an avenue that every time we make a decision. Whichever way it went, somebody's gonna come back at the next meeting and request this, I think that's what I'm saying.
Especially since.
Lene says, you know, we should do something, so, yes, we are, we've received it, we have filed it, we're taking no further action. That would, that would be my motion, is the best way of, I think, acknowledging that we got it, but we're not gonna take action.
I support him.
Okay. Any discussion at all? Okay, I'm, do a roll call.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Ground?
Yes.
Ms. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eileen?
Yes.
Mr. Stanis?
Yes.
This, this, Mr. McFadden?
Yes.
And Webster's, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Any more correspondence, Lene?
Um, I have no further correspondence.
Okay, then moving on to the planning commission comments, signing commissioner comments, are there any comments?
The only comment I have is I will, uh, I don't, depending on what the agenda is in June. I don't know, Lene, whether to bring back the bylaws and the, we look at bylaws in June or July. So I'll, I'll work with Renee, when is the appropriate time to bring the meeting is, we certainly don't want that to be a lengthy meeting.
Yeah, I think, um, July might be good, I'm gonna be out of, um, out of town for a couple of weeks. So I will.
I'll, I'll look for July then.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
County Board, Cindy?
Um, the township board, uh, made a recommendation to approve the fire department budget yesterday, which carried unanimously. And they did adopt your ordinances, amendments that we had recommended to them. And that was, uh, in a nutshell, that was what the township board has been up to.
Okay. Thank you. All right, any staff privately updates? I guess I can address, uh. Number four. So I think there's gonna be some free, uh, evaluating, uh, so. So. And then best buds? Lene?
Best buds, I have, I did send them an email, like you had requested. Um, Maria, the owner, said she was working on it, but, and then I let her know that we had the deadline and the upcoming meeting and I never heard back.
So, so Lene, uh, since we came like already on your extension. What's our timeline to really allow them to do that, if they don't come back, we, do we resent that? Or does it just?
Well, what happens, we would send a formal letter saying that their their approved use has expired. And that way we have it on record that we sent it and that's, that's all we do. And then, kind of like what happened with the last, um, grower, remember, they had a use permit. It expired and then that Satori four twenty came back in, might have been during your knee, um. That might have been the meeting you weren't here, but we've had that instance before and, yeah.
So therefore, if you don't hear anything from them, uh, at our June meeting, it would be that that time that we would send them the formal letter.
Yeah.
Today was the deadline?
Yes.
Today was the deadline, yeah.
In another month.
Um, they're just working on their, like, the demo of some of the interior spaces of that hotel. Um, I don't have any other updates on that one.
Okay. All right, I think that's it for, uh, private updates, and we move on to a second public comment period, at this point I'll open up some public comment more time. Uh, since we're kind of in a skeleton crew now, we'll open it up to the whole area if anyone would like to come up. Uh, same rules apply, uh, three minutes and five minutes as a group and.
Can we go past the new business again?
No, we're.
There's something I'm thinking. You can say.
But you can comment on it.
Okay. I was just doing a little research on the decibels, that says that crushing is usually eighty-six point five and it affects every five feet, so I don't know. What the distance is to that dog park or to that sagto files nature, because you're like, you thought that should be.
That's what we have to count.
Yeah, right.
There are all the different, um, anomalies for crushing, so, some are louder than others.
Yeah, and so hopefully that applicant will come back with that.
Hopefully they'll say this is the equipment we're using, and here's the start, so I've got the required value.
Yeah, right. Right.
Your name's Jennifer, right? Yes, okay, thank you, oh, yeah, it's already started.
Okay, anyone else? This point then, I'll, there's no one on Zoom, so.
Nope.
Okay, at this point I'll close, uh, public comment and I will, okay, I hope you return it, so. My second? Second, I'll lose a favor?
I guess.
Okay, thank you.